Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining us today. My name is Portia Roberson, and I am the Chair of the Michigan Civil Rights Commission. For those of you that don't know, the Commission is an eight-member body created by the 1963 Michigan Constitution. We are the only commission of this type that is enshrined within the state constitution. I now want to call this hearing to order. It is 4:22 PM. I am joined here today by the Executive Director of the Michigan Civil Rights Department, John Johnson, my fellow Commissioner, Commissioner Richard Corvo, and the Attorney for the Michigan Department of Civil Rights, Attorney Lamont Satchel. We are specifically charged with enforcing the civil rights protections against discrimination that Michigan affords to every resident and visitor. The Commission is responsible for investigating alleged discrimination against any person because of religion, race, color, or national origin, genetic information, sex, age, marital status, height, weight, arrest record, and physical and mental disability. In addition to housing, we enforce civil rights laws in relation to employment, education, public accommodation, law enforcement, and public service. Today, we are here to engage in a public hearing on fair housing. We convened this event because we would like to hear testimony from the public about direct discrimination or disparate outcomes experienced during housing-related transactions. That includes buying a house, renting a house or apartment, credit ratings, home loans, or appraisals. Today is the first of four hearings to happen around the state in the coming months. A virtual hearing is scheduled for February 7th. An in-person hearing will happen in the Saginaw-Flint Bay City area on March 16th. Finally, a hearing will happen in Grand Rapids on April 28th. And everything will convene with the 2024 Civil Rights Summit on Housing being held on June 12th at the Icon Building on the Detroit Riverfront. The Commission and Department of Civil Rights would like to extend our heartfelt thanks to the staff at the Detroit Public Schools and Martin Luther King Jr. Senior High School. Thank you to Principal Damian Perry for hosting our hearing today. Before we start this forum, we have a few housekeeping notes. We have invited four expert speakers who have been given seven to 10 minutes to share information that we hope is valuable to the audience as well as our commission. Anyone from the invited public providing testimony will have three to five minutes so that we can get as much testimony as possible. We have our timekeepers seated onstage, so please observe the one-minute warning and let the next person speak when time has expired. Most importantly, bathrooms are outside in the lobby to the right. Remember that the Commission is here to listen and accept testimony. We are not here for discussion or debate, only to listen. This event is being recorded, and we review the testimony as evidence towards creating our recommendations. If you would like to offer testimony, you need to complete the form being handed out at the registration desk outside. We have volunteers walking around today that can collect those forms and bring them to me. I will call your name to come forward and provide your testimony. I may also call the next person in line. If so, please come up and have a seat in the front row. This public hearing will end at 7:00 PM, so we will take our last testimony a few minutes before that time. Also, as a reminder, we will not be discussing individual cases tonight. If you have a question about a current or pending investigation, you will be directed to the questions table located outside in the lobby. And with that, we will call the first person. So I have received, in fact, one public comment card as of now, and the name is Ms. Shannon Tanis. If I am pronouncing that right, would you please come to the mic, and I'll ask you to give your name correctly?
Thank you. My name is Shannon Tanis. I come before you to speak about the discrimination that I've experienced, to the point that I had to figure out an oversight aspect to investigate what was going on with the housing system and why it was in such crisis. And this was going on before COVID. I come from the Kent County area, so what I discovered was there was a monopoly that was created by MISTAA to the stakeholders that told them they could prioritize status and vote to pick an organization or stakeholder to only handle certain cases like family status, or veterans, or seniors, things of that nature. Well, those organizations that are stakeholders, PHAs and stuff, were also not using the HMIS system. They were using their own independent systems. Also have experienced discrimination with credit, with vouchers, the exercise of my origin. I also discovered monopoly with the service providers for homeownership with MISTAA loans that they were... The current loan service loan provider right now is not in good standing. They haven't been since 2015, per Inspector General Report that states they were doing foreclosures against due process. And I've inquired to MISTAA. I've inquired to HUD. They say it's complicated. I've done my due diligence. I've, through this journey, am still being impacted by these discrimination with patterns and practices of these mechanisms, which I also have found that there's selectism with government accountability. And I'm not aware that the Commission only is to go after private or public corporations, but I also think their scope is to go after government accountability. I have also witnessed discrimination with the McKenty-Vento Act, which I filed a federal civil rights complaint, and they acknowledged that, but the state Civil Rights Commission or process denied that. So I've... I know Steve. I took training with him extensively. I've been vetted with another attorney for equal protection law regarding Title 42. I've done my due diligence, and I've witnessed people trying to steal my work product and take credit for themselves at the same time, not engage me properly. And so I would appreciate if I could get any engagement with the Commission to resolve these matters so they don't continue to create a perpetuity of harm against the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tanis. I appreciate your testimony. I would like... Tongue-tied this afternoon. I would now like to call Mr. Hayward Edwards from MISTAA. If you are available, I'd like you to come forward and give us your expert testimony on these matters. Good afternoon.
My name is Hayward Edwards, and I'm an inclusion and fair housing specialist for the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, MISTAA. I'm coming before you today to provide testimony about MISTAA and our commitment to fair housing as evidence through our relationship with the Fair Housing Centers of Michigan. MISTAA was established in 1966 and provides financial and technical assistance through public and private partnerships to create and preserve safe and decent affordable housing, engage in community economic development activities, develop vibrant cities, towns, and villages, and address homeless issues. Our loans and operating expenses are financed through the sale of tax-exempt and taxable bonds and notes to private investors. Proceeds of the bonds and notes are then loaned at below-market interest rates to developers of rental housing, and also fund home mortgages and home improvement loans. MISTAA also administers various federal housing programs. Much of our work is guided by the Fair Housing Act of 1968, which protects people from discrimination when they are renting or buying a home, getting a mortgage, seeking housing assistance, or engaging in other housing-related activities. This act, which was a follow-up to the Civil Rights Act of 1964, provided protections for race, color, national origin, religion, sex, including gender identity and sexual orientation, familial status, and disability. In accordance with the Fair Housing Act, entities that receive funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, are required to administer all programs and activities related to housing and community development in a manner that affirmatively furthers the policies of the Fair Housing Act. As part of the certification process to affirmatively further fair housing, that grantees are required to submit with their consolidated plan, grantees must complete an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice and to take actions to overcome the effects of any impediments identified through that analysis. MISTAA receives some of its funds from HUD and is required, as such, to complete an analysis of impediments. AI. MISTAA's AI highlighted numerous challenges to fair housing, such as ongoing discrimination, a deficiency in fair housing education and awareness, and inadequate enforcement of fair housing laws by local jurisdictions. Also, a 2021 public survey that led to the formation of Michigan's first statewide housing plan revealed that 23% of Michigan renters reported experiencing some sort of housing discrimination. MISTAA is committed to combating discrimination in housing. Along with continually reviewing our policies and procedures, we currently partner and provide grants to the Fair Housing Centers of Southwest Michigan, Southeast and Mid-Michigan, West Michigan, and Metro Detroit to expand their training and testing throughout the state. They provide virtual and in-person instruction for a wide variety of audiences, including the public, municipalities, local units of government, zoning professionals, code enforcement officials, lender partners, property managers, rental professionals, low-income housing tax credit applicants, development teams, landlords, tenants, homebuyers, and more. Those recorded trainings are available on their respective pages, and some are on the MISTAA Fair Housing page. The Fair Housing Centers also have an ambitious testing program where trained and certified individuals visit properties to determine if discrimination is occurring. The practice of sending comparable persons, or what we call paired testers, who differ only in the characteristic being tested, has been helpful in determining differential treatment. The findings from the testing program and MISTAA's own recent work conducting a racial equity impact assessment, ARIA, within the Qualified Allocation Plan for the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program, what we call LI-TAC, has identified the need to implement the following tasks to strengthen and support fair housing practices. Number one, to collect, review, and provide feedback to developments on their tenant selection criteria policy. Number two, to provide technical assistance and training to developments addressing affirmative marketing best practices. Fair Housing Centers are vital partners in preparing and distributing thousands of brochures statewide that speak to the discriminatory challenges renters, potential homebuyers, and others face daily. Social media has also been added to the education and outreach campaigns to extend audience reach. The Fair Housing Centers are further assisting municipalities and local governments by providing templates on zoning, land use, reasonable accommodation, criminal record policies, anti-lockout statutes, and reconsideration of value for appraisals, all as recommended by the statewide housing plan. The after-action reports submitted from the Fair Housing Centers to MISTAA at the end of the grant term will provide recommendations for future training and proposed policy considerations that will help MISTAA proactively promote fair housing and further advance fair housing among partners. MISTAA's vision is to make Michigan a place where all people have quality, affordable housing as a foundation to reach their full potential. The partnership with the Fair Housing Centers thoroughly aligns with our vision and is an essential complement to the work we do to ensure every Michigander has access to safe, healthy, affordable, accessible, and attainable housing in a community of their choice. Thank you for the opportunity to provide feedback and comments.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. I just have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
When we talk about the development of mixed-use properties, particularly where they indicate that they're going to do low-income housing mixed with higher-end rentals, are those the type of housing that you receive a voucher for? And if so, how is it determined how many of those vouchers go out and to whom they go, if you know? If you can answer that.
So it's... As a young lady mentioned earlier, you know, it's very complicated process. There are different considerations given according to the... to the region, to the area, to the neighborhood, and then even some of the programs that we provide as far as how many and what the mix is as far as those properties and developments go. We work with a number of developers and have multi-tiered programs, and so that's a difficult question to ask without going down through every single program that we offer.
Got you. Do they allow for MISTAA to participate in determining how many low-income rental properties there are in a particular development? Do you work with the developer at the initial stage to determine, based upon the size of the building, how many of those rental units will be available for low income?
So there are a number of surveys and analytical studies that we go through. We have a department just that does the market research that helps to answer some of those questions. And there are many conversations. Of course, I work in inclusion, and so we are working to have more conversations when it comes to identifying the neighborhood, where these developments go, and, you know, including the neighbors in the conversation even before any decisions are made.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony.
You're welcome.
I should ask for a second. Commissioner Corvo, did you have any questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Edwards. I'm going to proceed forward at this point. Is Ms. Baird here with us? Patricia Baird? You come forward and offer your testimony?
Thank you, Ms. Baird.
One of my many adjustments in life. Thank you so much. First, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to share some information with the Commission. It's an honor to be able to do that. My name is Patricia Baird. The last name is B-A-I-R-D. I'm the Program Manager for the Fair Housing Center of Eastern Michigan, which is part of the Legal Services of Eastern Michigan. At Legal Services of Eastern Michigan, we provide civil law assistance to low-income individuals plus others. We do have things that are on a sliding scale, but we also have things like Fair Housing Services and Senior Services that there's no income restrictions whatsoever. Some of the practice areas that we have at Legal Services include consumer problems, employment, education difficulties, individual rights, housing matters, fair housing, senior services, family law, bankruptcy, and public benefits. In the audience, I also have with me today our Executive Director, Jill Nylander, is Our jurisdiction for the Fair Housing Center is a 14-county jurisdiction, and we have two types of... well, three types of grants primarily. It would be HUD, and we have the PEI grant, which was Private Enforcement Initiative. We also have the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, and then we get monies from many of the CBDGs in the community. Our staffing includes four test coordinators, five fair housing attorneys, one of them being a supervising attorney, and program manager. The role of the Fair Housing Center is enforcement, testing, client advocacy, systemic investigations, and outreach. I wanted to share with the Commission some of the things that we're seeing in our communities in the 14-county jurisdictions so you could get an idea of what type of discriminatory practices that we're seeing. And so one of them that we're seeing is family discrimination. We designed testing so we would have a young woman, and it had to be COVID-related because it was under ARPA, and a young woman of 22 years old gained custody of her 12-year-old brother and her eight-year-old brother. And with that, because her parents both are deceased now from COVID, that was the script that we were using. And there were many times that she received less favorable information from the apartment complex because who knows why? You know, whatever implicit bias or whatever's going on with that particular agent, thinking that the boys will be running around and this type... You know, we can list... We could be here for hours listing these types of things, what goes on in people's mind. So we're seeing some of that. Disability-related... Disability is the number-one complaint for HUD, MISTAA, or everybody, and including us. We have... We designed a test where we had live-in aides for a person with a disability that was kind of has long-term effects from COVID, and we found a significant difference in the... in persons with a live-in aide being added extra steps that they had to go through. And because they didn't want that person living there, they wanted them on the lease. They wanted them... Several hoops that they had to go through. Some of those were good, okay, but there were others that were in violation. Another one that surprised us is emancipation. We decided to see if young people who were aging out of foster care, or they're having trouble getting housing because of their age, and there's definitely some differences in treatment. They had to jump through many more hoops and were discouraged to even live there compared to the other tester. Another one that I designed a program for is linguistic profiling. In other words, a person is discriminated because of the color of their voice. We took the information from Dr. Bowe, who actually came up with the theory of linguistic profiling, and then we paired a person... It was very extensive, and if you ever wanted to know how we did it, I would be glad to share that with you. I don't want to take up that much time with it tonight. But it was very extensive and research-based, and we did discover that if you have a voice that may lead others to believe that you're African-American compared to a Caucasian tester, you had less favorable information received. Then we have race. We had an interesting case this... the past couple weeks where we sent a white tester and a black tester to a senior residence, and the black tester went in first. Black tester was told, yes, we only have one apartment left. Tester asked, can I see the apartment? Because she wasn't offered. And she says, yes, it's in Site Building B, and gave her the number. And she says, I'll meet you there. The white tester went in 45 minutes later, and she says, do you have any apartments available? The white tester was actually told that we have so many apartments available that corporate is really getting on us about having so many available. And then she says, would you like to see one? So she says, I tell you what, I have a golf cart. Let's go together. And she took the white tester in a golf cart, showed her the apartment, and when she came back, she laid her hand on the tester's leg and patted it and says, you are the type of person that we'd like to have it living here. Definite difference in treatment. Then we did some prisoner reentry, and we're definitely seeing a difference in that, where we had a black individual with a criminal history, a white individual with a criminal history. And then I wanted to throw in another one where I had a black individual with no criminal history. And by golly, if there weren't times when the white tester was favored over the person that did not have a criminal history because of the color of their skin. We're also looking into zoning ordinances to look for some infractions there and making recommendations to municipalities. When I mentioned the disability-related discriminatory practices, some of the denials that we have dealt with with clients and/or with testing is emotion... denying a special emotional support animal to the point of that person being evicted, and we had to step in. Transferring to a different location, whether it be a sister property or a different building, that was denied. Early learners termination with no penalties, that was denied. Designated accessible handicap parking space, again, denied. Service animals, breed and size restrictions, and we're finding more and more that we're getting numbers, like you can only have one or you can only have two. A recent case we had is the individual had one service animal, and her boyfriend had to move in because she was in a serious car accident, and he had two support animals, and they wouldn't let the dog stay there. And so we had to intervene with that, and that's... We've had a couple of those. And then, of course, the refusal of ramps and handrails, and my favorite, lowering the peephole, because I really think that's necessary so I can see out of it. Some of the challenges that we have, and before I go into the challenges, I want to realize that I've worked in this position for, I think this is my 25th anniversary, and I've worked very closely with MDCR. In fact, when I was out there, it felt like Old Homewake. I got lots of hugs and everything. There was a real close bond between MDCR and our Fair Housing Center and working together. And so when I give you this information, don't feel it as a criticism. It's an invitation and an opportunity for us to work together like we used to. We want a faster resolution on filing complaints. Right now, we have, from 2021, we have six cases still open, and 2022, we have eight, and then two from February this year. So again, it's most more important, important than I say that in the sense that we want to work together again. I think that it was very productive. The other recommendations I have is more training on appraisal testing, prisoner reentry, and source of income, more support and training for CBDG recipients, helping them develop their own fair housing plan. And I'd love to see an annual published report at state level of a trends report so we know what's going on, and include that some of your best practices, because that's how we learn and we can develop those. And the last thing I have on here is to do a statewide marketing media campaign to increase awareness for fair housing. In closing, I just want to say again, on behalf of Legal Services and the Fair Housing Center, thank you for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you very much, Ms. Baird. I want to first ask if anyone who's with me has questions, and it looks like our Executive Director does.
Thank you for that information. I'm John Johnson. I serve as the Executive Director. First, let me say I appreciate you being here and that I was sort of born and raised in legal services, as you may or may not know.
Yes.
And I work very closely with, I think, your former ED, Bob Gillette?
Yes.
So I'm certainly appreciative of the work that you do. It's certainly legendary in terms of the work that's being done out of your operation, and thank you for all that. I certainly want to receive that, and I'm sure you will provide that written testimony so that we can internalize it and certainly redevelop our relationship with your agency. Some of the things you talked about is some question I ask, are these the same landlords or the same... Do you find these... what you talked about in terms of these discriminatory practices, is it widespread, or are we targeting a certain management company? Can you speak on that at all?
Yes. Generally, the ones that I gave you examples of are different management companies, and they're all over, because we have the 14 counties, and we do test in all the 14 counties based on certain complaints that come up. Do we have management companies that show a history of discriminatory practices? Yes, we do. There's no doubt about it. And the best thing to do, in my mind, is to find the other properties and to also do the testing there so we can file a big administrative complaint or a lawsuit.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Corvo?
Yeah, Richard Corvo, thank you for your work. It's... Am I up yet? Thank you for your work. It's much appreciated. I'm very familiar with it. There's been occasions in the past where I've done things that you'll be housed, and I invite you to continue to do so and keep up the good work.
Thank you so much, both of you, for saying that.
And thank you, Ms. Baird, for your testimony. We appreciate you participating with us today.
Thank you.
Is Miriam Smith available? I have a public comment for Ms. I have a public comment from Ms. Smith. Ms. Smith, would you come forward? Give us your full name and spell it for us, please. I'm sorry, one second, before I allow you to start. If anybody else would like to make public comments, please receive a form and fill it out, and they will bring it to me.
What if you filled it out out there? How long did it take to get them out there?
They'll bring it up to me shortly. If you just filled it out, they'll bring it to me shortly. Thank you. I'm sorry.
No problem. Greetings. My name is Miriam Smith, M-I-R-A-I-A-M, Smith, S-M-I-T-H. I am, I am the president of East Davison Village Community Center, which we are located on the east side of Detroit, north inside by Hamtramck. One of the issues that we're addressing currently in that particular area is that housing discrimination appraisals. When we go over to Hamtramck, square footage-wise, it could be 100 and, or 1,200 footage, and they may give someone 120,000, where I am a homeowner myself, they'll come over on my side, and they'll say, we want to give you 30 or 40,000. I'm going, that's a significant drop. Also, we have other ethnicities that have come in, they're not in compliance, they'll put these tall, you call, gatings up where you can't see, and then they'll have like some digging they'll do. I've called in several times because I don't want them to hit a gas line. First of all, they say they don't understand, so I send it to the city and make sure things are okay. One of the questions and one of the situations that we have over there, they're supposed to be doing affordable homes. Now, Bangaltown, East Davison Village, they had to, well, let me go back, East Davison Village had to collate organization in which we can be heard, because Bangaltown was just taken over. We don't mind the different ethnicities coming in, however, be fair, when COVID came about, it didn't attack ethnicity, it attacked the human race. So therefore, everyone was affected by it. So what my major concern is that we have fairness in housing, they're going to come with affordable housing, now they're asking us to put our input because they've already gotten the input of Bangaltown residents. We've been here for a long period of time, I've stayed here, I'm a caregiver as well for my mom that's 87, that's why I fight so hard, because we don't want to root her up from where she is. She's had a lot of offers, but they want to give her pennies on a dime for her, her property, and she has a lot of property. So that's what has made us remain there until we find some justice and some fairness in housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I just have one question. With regard to the installation of gates, as you mentioned, has the city taken any, has the city had any response to the complaints that you may have filed with them with regard to their permits to install these fences?
Well, they're consistently doing it. So the city is aware of it now. Because I have, and some of the other constituents in the neighborhood have shed light to this. They haven't shed light in the, you know, in the past. We, we've been saying, hey, is there some payout? Because we're, we're trying to do the same thing. We're trying to restore our property as well. However, we have to stand compliance. So what makes them any different?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from anyone? Thank you, Ms. Smith. I appreciate your testimony here today. Is Ms., I'll go on order, is Ms. Wilkes? Hi, Ms. Wilkes. Please come forward, provide your testimony, and if you, spell out your name for us, please. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
No, it's right, right here. Thank you. My name is Simone, S-Y-M-O-N-E. I'm speaking on behalf of my community, which-
Give me your last name.
Oh, Wilkes, W-I-L-K-E-S.
Thank you.
I'm speaking on behalf of my community. I'm also with Detroit Action, we have been trying to get fair housing justice, but I'm coming here today to speak on behalf of myself. I brought my children up here so y'all can see the generational, generational trauma that you guys are saying that y'all trying to stop, which is still hitting us. I recently, a year ago, moved into a home that's, the landlord, he stays in Chicago. I have not seen that landlord within a year. I've just been working with his realtor to give him money, but giving him money through Zillow, Pal, those type of things to give him money. So right now, what I'm doing is, by me being on Section 8, they come through and do their annual. Section 8 had gave him a whole month to come and fix his place. Well, he have not fixed his place. Been working with Section 8 to try to get up out of there, but they've been moving slow, haven't been answering their phone, and then also, he's still asking me to send him money since I've been there. Section 8 stopped their half, and I stopped their half in September, and I still have to pay my half. I don't feel like that's fair. I'm living in a house where the pipes had exploded next door from mine. The condo administration, whatever they call theyself, where I'm staying at, they came in and they fixed the pipe, but they told me that it was up to my landlord to fix the hole. So when I told my landlord that he had to fix the hole, he said, can you do it? I said, yeah, I can do it, but is you going to take something off the rent? He said, yeah. So I got to fix $500, and then it was time to come pay rent, he only took 200 off. And right now, we're facing a week away from being homeless. I have been giving people applications, I'm on Section 8, so I don't understand why they keep running my credit if I'm on Section 8 and they know I don't have it. They charging 100 to 75 dollars for applications, and knowing that they going to deny us, I am working with two different realtors who keep saying to me, well, this person, if you apply for this house, this person going to deny you, because they always deny people. My thing is, if you're a realtor and you know this, why keep sending out the houses? I also went to HUD to talk, to talk about, is one specific guy on there, his name is Joel, he has at least 25 houses on that list, and he's very, very disrespectful. He said he don't want to work with me because I asked him about blinds. My thing is, I have to give you $2,200 in order to move in, and it's not coming with new blinds, or it's not coming with any of the things that me and my children need, and I'm in between two abandoned houses on this side and that side, and he telling me, oh, well, you have to get your own blinds. And just like the house I'm in right now, that landlord told me I had to give me, had to give, had to get my own blinds as well, and I gave him well over 1,700. He has not came and fixed anything. Me and my children are, are about to be homeless within a week. I have been reaching out to legislators, no callback. I have been reaching out to HUD, no callback. I have been reaching out to everyone, and still no callback. It's always a 1-800 number or a voicemail number. My children, he's six years old, have not been in school yet, so he's lacking that education, and he's lacking that education and not being around his peers or learning. I know I'm teaching them at home, but he want to be around other kids too. He would like to see what school feel like. He's only six years old and have to sit in front of a computer every Monday and Wednesday in order to get free tutoring, because inside of the school, they charging you 125 dollars for Let's Keep. So I'm just coming here today with my children to make sure that you guys can hear us and see us, because this generational curse of being homeless, I was a homeless teenager from 17 all the way to 25, I do not want my children going through it, but I don't know who do I hold accountable if I'm still getting voicemails.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Ms. Wilkes. I have a couple of things. One is, so the eviction is coming from Section 8 because his half of the rent is not being paid?
No, the eviction has not happened yet. It's going to happen. Section 8 has stopped their, their portion of the rent, and I still have to pay.
Okay.
While I'm still there. They not paying nothing, but as long as I'm there, I still have to give up 200 and something dollars that I need to be saving in order to move into a place that's charging me 2,000, $2,200 just for a move in. And the rent is 1,350.
And that 200 dollars, you've sent that to your landlord?
Yes, my landlord.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Well, first and foremost, this is exactly the type of testimony we wanted to hear about today and these type of incidents. I, I would like, and I know you have your children here, so I know you don't have a lot of time to be here, but we did have a question table outside and really about specific cases. If you could give them some additional information?
Yes, I did, but it was just a QR code that you had to scan, and it's a 1-800 number. It's not no, 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 where you can type in your complaint, it's a 1-800 number, so I guess I got to call and leave a voicemail.
You can do that, but actually, if you could leave some information with us, that would be helpful as well. I'd like us to make sure that we address some of the issues that you've raised as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
And the executive director has a comment or question?
Hi, Ms. Wilkes. Again, so glad you came in.
Thank you.
Told us what your situation is, we'll see if we can do to help. Have you sought legal counsel?
Yes, I have talked to a lawyer. Unfortunately, they were saying that, well, really, they wasn't saying nothing, they were just saying, oh, you got to go to this place and talk to this person and talk to that person, and giving me numbers, and they told me to put the money in an estro. But unfortunately, if I put the money in an estro, Section 8 would deem me in noncompliance, so therefore, if I put it in an estro, I still be messing myself up, because now I'm in noncompliance. So that's the only thing that the lawyer told me to do.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for, for attending today, because I, I recognize how difficult it is with two small children, hi handsome little ones, to make it down here, and we really, like I said, appreciate your testimony. This is exactly why the executive director wanted to hold these hearings, and the commission wanted to participate. If you will leave your information, that'd be very helpful.
I definitely will. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, I want to move forward at this time. Is our other expert testimony Steve Tomkowiak? I know I'm probably pronouncing that wrong.
Steve Tomkowiak.
Tomkowiak.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you for coming.
I'll just be real brief. I have a PowerPoint, but I'll submit it. It'd be nice, so I'll kind of summarize what's on it.
Will you spell your first and last name for?
Sure. First name Steve, S-D-E-V-E, last name Tomkowiak, T-O-M-K-O-W-I-A-K. Just put a little V over the W in your offset. So, good question, right? What are fair housing priorities 2023 for our state? Really, some of these are even broader than our state, but we'll focus on our state. Looking at priorities, I'm not going to go through too many of them, but just to take a step back, what, what would I want to know? First of all, I think increasing homeownership is a priority. Another one would be, what would we, what else could we do to address the largest segment of the housing needs of the largest number of Michigan residents? And then the third one, of course, would be to try to improve the opportunities for marginalized, vulnerable populations, people with disabilities, minority groups, single-parent households, et cetera. First on homeownership, no one can dispute how important it is. The mean, the median net worth for homeownership is fairly consistent, about $250,000. A rental household is 5,000. When you look at a mean net worth, it's a million dollars for a homeownership household, yet only about 90,000 for a rental household. So there's two separate groups of people, homeownership and rental households. But then when you go and drill down by race, the, I'll just take the, the mean net worth for white families, close to a million. Hispanic, 567,000. I'm sorry, that's Asian. For black Hispanic families, it's around 150,000. So we have this wide disparity. What's driving the disparity is the race gap in homeownership rates. The Fair Housing Act got passed in 1968. The first data that came out on homeownership was 1970. The black homeownership in 1970 was 41.6%. It's gone all the way up to 45% in 2022. So that'd be about a 4% increase. The white homeownership rate was 68% in 1970, it's up to 74.4% in 2022. That's about 5% increase. The bottom line is this, the disparity actually increased by a point despite the fact that we've had all these years of fair housing enforcement. So what we're doing is not working. And if you look at the population percentages, I'll just use Detroit. Detroit, 77% black population, yet only 49% of the loan applications come from black residents. That gap is pretty consistent. There's some drop-off with white, Hispanic, and Asian, mostly black and Hispanic, but people are basically not even looking at homeownership, a large percentage. Then, once we get in the door and make an application, then the difficulty with origination rates. Black origination rate in Detroit is only 40%, 53% for whites, Hispanic is 38.89% within Detroit. Looking at the statewide total, white origination rate is 64%, black population is still only 47%. So we have a large percentage of black population, Hispanic too, but largely black, that aren't even applying, and then once they do, they face low origination rates. Origination rates are the key thing, because that means they actually closed on the loan. Denial rates are very high as well. Also, I have data, I'll be submitting it, has origination rates for lenders in Detroit and in the state of Michigan. It does, does, I took the names out, but it's stunning. Some of them are in the high 90s, 100% origination rates, others are like zero. There's one here, 3,148 applications, zero originations. Another one, 1,469 applications, zero, or three, 47 originations, 3.20%. We need to draw attention to what these lenders are doing. I'm not going to name names, but the numbers speak for themselves. Why in the world would anyone go and apply with a loan with a particular lender that has an origination rate in the zero, near zero, zero or near zero? But that's not all, and this is really disturbing. Within Detroit, we have a subscription to lending patterns, there's subprime indicators within Detroit. Again, the black population that receive originations, the subprime indicator is 20%, so a fifth of them are facing loans with high interest, high costs. White population is only 5.36%, Hispanic is high too, at 18%. So congrats, you got a loan, but you're really getting a real bad deal. It's just sad. And I could show you, I have the denial rates as well. And so what do we do? National Association of Realtors had a Fair Housing Action Plan, they call it ACT, Accountability, Culture, Change, and Training, and all really rock-solid fair housing, fair lending approaches to the problem. But again, if you come back to what I started with, with the data showing disparity between black, white homeownership rates, white, Hispanic homeownership rates, those things have not worked. They just haven't. So to double down on fair housing enforcement, fair lending enforcement, which hasn't worked, expecting it to really make a difference, hasn't done it. So what do you do? First of all, I'm not saying don't enforce fair housing, fair lending. In fact, I think there should be more enforcement of it. I don't think it's really been effective. Believe it or not, there's not been a successful administrative hearing or court case challenging appraisal discrimination. There's only been a couple settlements, that's it. Lending verdicts virtually nonexistent when it comes to discrimination. So fair housing has problems in holding it. What we have to do is hold lenders accountable for their low origination rates, high denial rates, not serving communities. We're not really drilling down the data like we should. We've got to prioritize homeownership. It's got to be a national priority, it's got to be a state priority. That's the only thing that benefits family wealth, it correlates with health consequences, improve health, improve educational opportunities, improve business opportunities, people can access the equity in their home to start businesses, it stabilizes communities, absolutely nothing wrong with homeownership, it's win-win all the way around. That is our key priority. When we talk about fair housing, so much of our work is dealing, probably 90% with dealing with rental situations, but homeownership is still the ultimate goal. It's critically important also to address societal, social class factors, educational factors, all of these things that depress homeownership rates. So the problem is, there's larger societal factors, lack of affordable housing for people to purchase. All of these things cause problems when it comes to homeownership. All of these issues have to be tackled. I'm not, we're Fair Housing Center, I'm not going to say we don't want to do fair housing, fair lending, absolutely, I'm committed to it. But I, just realistic enough that that's not all that we have to do. Another thing is, kind of transition a little bit, we need effective source of income legislation and criminal record protection. Another thing is, kind of transition a little bit, we need effective source of income legislation and criminal record protection. Source of income, believe it or not, has become our third most common complaint, and most jurisdictions in Michigan don't even cover source of income. We had 31 complaints in the last two years with source of income. It's a major problem. We have to do more when it comes to it, and the jurisdictions that we have tested, we found widespread violations. We just got a finding from Detroit Civil Rights, Inclusion, and Opportunity Department, where they required a black resident in Detroit who was on a voucher to show three times the gross rental amount, not three times his tenant portion amount. And Creo correctly found that that was a violation. Detroit doesn't have source of income in that language. They have public benefit status is the protected class in Detroit. And they found that was a violation of the public benefit status provision. So it was discriminatory. One more thing, of course, we need to do is dealing with criminal records. That is a huge barrier for people being denied housing. The disparities between the felony misdemeanor conviction records of black, Hispanic applicants for housing is very, very, much higher than white population and other groups. And when the criminal record policies are overbroad, it really has an adverse impact on those protected groups. In our community here, it's primarily black population. One study showed black male population, 33% have a felony record. It's shocking. Not saying that someone can't be turned down if they're listed in criminal sex offender list or something like that, or they have crimes against management company and things like that. Of course, someone can be turned down for rental. Absolutely. But the policy has to bear some resemblance to whether the person is still a threat. After four or five years, maybe even less, and the person has not picked up any more cases, they're no more likely than the general population to become a recidivist. And believe it or not, there's a prison to homelessness pipeline where, this is one recent federal court decision, Kim Yim versus City of Seattle. Approximately 90% of private landlords conduct criminal background checks on prospective tenants. And nearly half of all private landlords in Seattle say they would reject an applicant with a criminal record. As a result, former incarcerated persons are nearly 10 times more likely as the general population to experience homelessness or housing insecurity. And one in five who leave prison become homeless shortly thereafter. What happens is persons without stable housing are significantly more likely to recidivate, with one study estimating that people with unstable housing are up to seven times more likely to reoffend. Denying someone housing because they have a criminal record puts them on a path toward criminal activity, and they're going to probably recidivate. So we have to do something with it. Michigan has House Bill 4878. It is a great bill. That should pass. Absolutely. The only provision that really needs to be put on there is there must be a requirement that housing providers, landlords, have available to people who are seeking housing what the criminal record is. And also, if they have it farmed out to a third party that is pulling criminal record, credit, rental history, and all of that, that that also, that criteria be made available to applicants. We have difficulty as fair housing centers determining what policy is being used because the landlords say, well, we didn't. We don't know if the third party said not eligible. We, as though there is no connection between the two. Typically, the third parties are using the criteria established by the landlord and the housing provider or the management company. We need to have that information available so we can see if that record is overbroad. Anyway, so I'll stop right there. I know you have a lot of testimony to hear. Source of income is really good. I applaud the legislation that passed. I believe it passed the Michigan Senate and sent it over to the House. I'm pleased that the Michigan Department of Civil Rights has opposed it because of the overly broad exemption. And we stand with you on that. It was basically excluding, only, the source of income legislation would only include persons that have an interest in five or more rental units. The data's on our website. We have data for Detroit. That would exclude around 67% of all rental households in Detroit. So it only leaves like 32% available for people with a voucher. And of that 32%, some would be priced out. For example, we've seen it where landlords will price it $5, $10, $15 over the market rate, whatever they can do to make the home unavailable. So they're trying to avoid being subject to the source of income protections. So the exemption is overbroad, and there's a problem with the remaining properties that are available, that there'll be efforts to kind of evade source of income coverage. So I think the, it's on our website, the exemption didn't need to be there. It was put into place in the Fair Housing Act before the Supreme Court ruled that fair housing laws could reach purely private housing transactions, all of them. So it's archaic. It goes back to pre-April 1968. The source of income legislation should be passed with no special exemption, period. Wipe it out. It should not be there. And I would take a step back. I know I shouldn't be advocating in front of the Michigan Legislature, not you. But at some point, they feel like, well, they hear so many different viewpoints on source of income for and against, and they kind of throw up their hands like, well, what do we do? Well, the answer is do the right thing. Pass the legislation, give a source of income protection, and don't put in unnecessary barriers to effective legislation with these kinds of exemptions, period. They're elected up there to do the right thing. It's a groneful opportunity that somebody has, and they do the right thing. Yes, there's conflicting voices a lot. There's conflicting voices all the time, but you got to be guided on what the goals are. The goals are, we have a large, poor population that cannot get suitable housing. The statistics, and I have it in the PowerPoint, are just stark in terms of the unavailability of homes for low-income individuals, like 30 per 100, sometimes even less than that. And we know what happens. Our eviction rates in Michigan are off the chart. When you compare it to the national average, it's an embarrassment. It's an absolute embarrassment. I can't say enough about that. And there will be more. We're going to have some research and some work done on that as well. Source of income is one step that could really improve, could start to lower that eviction filing rate in our state. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will defer if anyone has any questions. Yes, Attorney Sergeant.
Mr. Tom.
Kowiak.
Kowiak. Thank you. I have a question with respect to, both in the state of Michigan and nationally, do we really have a good grasp on the scope of this problem? Because it seems to me a lot of what we know with respect to the discrimination, the other issue that you speak to, a lot of it is because of people who complain about it, right?
Yes.
But, I mean, even that is amazing and stark in terms of the discrimination. But do we really know the scope and the extent of the discrimination that's going on out there based upon how we currently go about gathering that information?
That's an excellent question. I thought about even, limited by time. But HUD has commissioned, this goes back several years. They commissioned some studies, and I can get that information to you, where they interviewed people and asked them, did a large nationwide survey, how many people felt that they were a victim of discrimination? And they came up with a percentage. Then they asked the next question, did you file a housing discrimination complaint? And it was roughly between 1 in 3 and 1 in 5 or more who actually experienced discrimination, but yet they didn't file a complaint. So that's a real problem. It's not as much unemployment, but that manifests itself in housing. And here's why. If you apply for apartment or whatever, and they say, well, we don't have anything available, you go on to another property. You don't know. You don't know that they actually have a unit available, that they rent to someone else of a different race the next day. It's different unemployment. Employment discrimination, all discrimination is wrong. It's immoral. But employment discrimination, you may go back to that place, you may know somebody who works there, and they may tip you off, hey, this person got the job, or this person got a promotion, or this person wasn't fired when you were, and it was the same work conduct. So it's more recognizable in the employment setting. That's why you see like more, almost half of the employment cases have retaliation components to them. We don't have that as much in employment because there's not that kind of interaction. So there's less information given to somebody in a home seeking. It's even worse when it comes to mortgage lending. People have no idea how others are being treated. You really have to go through and analyze lending data. You've got to get spreadsheets and seeing how others with similar qualifications under the similar loan programs are treated. That's very difficult. In the appraisal cases, the only reason that people have recognized them is because they whitewashed their home and removed anything showing that a black family lives there, has their home reappraised, and they see a broad disparity in the appraisal rate. But that came because of a news report, and it alerted people to that possibility of appraisal discrimination, and they self-tested it. But that's why typically in employment or in housing situations, you just don't see that. And this is another point too, is why it's important to do hearings like this, where you can get at that. You're getting hearings for people that you're not necessarily receiving complaints. Our office has done a great deal of American Sign Language testing, where people are not given American Sign Language services when they should. And because we don't have people who are, what, deaf, making complaints. Many are, it's sad, have low educational level, but just don't bring those complaints forward. So there's a lot of groups that aren't bringing complaints, but yet they are facing discrimination. And so that's why it's important to do it, to get out some of those things. But yeah, that's a very, it's a very, very good point. So I don't really, if someone asks me point-blank, hey, Steve, what do you think the extent of housing discrimination is? I can't answer that. I would tell people is this. I don't walk around saying the whole world is discriminating against everybody seeking housing or seeking a loan. But then I also say, well, I don't think everybody is, I don't think there's a lack of discrimination at all. So we have in our office numerous cases that are flagrant violations. Our recoveries have been six figures every single year. For the, I just, you know, working on a HUD grant application for about a little over two-year period, our recovery is between $1.1 and $1.2 million, just one small fair housing office. So there are really significant violations. There are a lot of people that are doing the right thing. I find more reception to fair housing in terms of counties and cities than I've witnessed previously in my lifetime. That's all good. But there are still people that are still violating the laws with impunity. And I'm seeing that, of course, with source of income and criminal record particularly. Those two stand out. American Sign Language stands out. Those are the big ones right now. And of course, lending is because it's such an important interest. That's a real difficult one to get at. But we need to shine the light on lenders that are just turning so many people down. And you say, well, I don't know if that's discrimination or not. Well, I know within the groups that they're being denied, it's going to be a significantly minority population within that group.
Thank you. Can I also ask one other thing, and that is just, can you provide the website where you said a lot of this information could be found?
Yes. It's fairhousingdetroit.org.
Thank you.
Happy Friday night. It's really been a pleasure working with Director Johnson. I can't say enough about him. I'm telling everybody what a pleasure he is to work with.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
I feel like we have a buddy, a friend in this whole movement. He's made steps to open up communication with the fair housing centers, and that's the experience that we've had. And I'm quite certain he reaches out to other groups as well in the same way. But it's just, it's just been a joy and a pleasure working with him. We're happy to do so.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony here this evening.
Thanks, Steve.
I'd like to do a couple of our public comments. So with that, I will call Aminata So. Is that correct? Am I pronouncing it right? Probably not. Sal? Aminata So. Please step forward if you would. Would you spell your full name for our reporter?
Good afternoon. My name is Aminata So, A-M-I-N-A-T-A, last name S-O-W. So I just wanted to share what I'm currently experiencing. I'm a native Detroiter. I moved back to Detroit in 2020 after being away for 20 years and purchased my first house last year in West Village. I live on St. Paul between Parker and Seminole, and I'm a part of a condominium association. It's five units, five units. And I've just been experiencing very inappropriate and bullying tactics from my neighbors. Again, there are five units, and essentially, we have very antiquated condo bylaws. There are a number of different things that are under the bylaws that the association is supposed to cover, like the roof and things of that sort. I'm the newest member, a part of the association, and essentially, I'm just facing issues where, one, I found out later on after I moved in, that when my neighbors found out who I was, they wanted to vote me in. Some of the neighbors wanted to vote me in based off of my appearance. And one of the longest members in the association said, well, no, we're not going to do that because those are tactics that are used to keep people out of certain neighborhoods. In addition to that, they wanted to raise our association dues from $250 to $1,200. We have 100-year-old-plus property, like they were built in 1912. So you cannot make up for deferred maintenance in five years. $1,200 a month for association dues when you don't have amenities, you don't have a swimming pool, we don't have security. I think it's just outrageous. So essentially, they've also tried to use the bylaws to keep people off the board, but again, five units. And so there are three individuals that are operating as the board. And I've since February secured my own lawyer to basically kind of fight some of these tactics. So they winded up not raising the dues to $1,200, but to $597. $600, that's still a lot of money. I am, again, the newest member, a part of the association. So I bought at a time when housing prices were up and also rates were up as well. So I'm paying more than everyone in a part of the community. So currently, I am being interviewed by Bridge Detroit because I reached out to them. I know there's an issue in the city of Detroit about high condominium associations. And so I just wanted to share my story because I do think that is an issue. And I am having a hard time navigating it, essentially because I'm like, well, who kind of regulates that? Like, I understand that's a separate entity, and the association, the condominium association was started in 1981 when a developer bought those units. Even though the units across the street, they look like ours, but they're zoned as single-family homes. And so it's just an issue as, you know, a young Detroiter moving back, wanting to build a life in the city, but also knowing the undertones that are currently happening with just change around the city and just living in West Village. It's just very frustrating. And so again, I'm currently escoring my $597 for my dues, but also paying out minimum $900 a month for a lawyer. And so as a young homeowner, first-time homebuyer, also learning about uncapped taxes, I got overtaxed by the city of Detroit, but that's another story, it's very hard navigating. And so I'm just telling my story and sharing it just in the event someone else is navigating it and just trying to find a way of how to mitigate it. Because my neighbors don't want a solution. I think they just want what they want. And I'm like, you can't bully people into doing what you want, so.
Thank you very much for your testimony. I don't have any questions. I don't know if anybody else does. My eyebrows shot up when you talked about raising from $250 to $1,200. So I really appreciate you bringing that to light. And I think about it as a condo owner myself. I don't know who actually controls even more of the co-op and condo associations outside of, we talk about housing and fair rental, but we don't really talk about those kind of properties as well. So thank you for your testimony, and we will absolutely include it in our evidence as we move forward.
Thank you.
Ms. Rhonda Ervin? Ms. Ervin? Thank you. If you can come and give your name to our reporter, spell the spelling of your name to our reporter.
Rhonda Ervin. That's with an H, R-H-O-N-D-A, Ervin, E-R-V-I-N. It's just, first I was going to say, no, I don't have a comment. But then when she spoke about the condo, I have a sister who just moved to Long Beach. She was in a condo. She's been paying HOA fees on her condo for eight months now. And she had two buyers in the co-op. They denied both buyers because they have a certain criteria of the type of people they want to rent the co-op to. So my sister is still working with a Realtor who is trying to... So my sister is still working with a Realtor who is trying to sell her co-op. That was just to piggyback on what the young lady just said. So those issues really do exist. The other thing I wanted to say was that I'm appalled by the fact that there are so few people here considering the issues that we have in the city of Detroit, all of the new development that's going on. And we are saying that, what is it, 25% or so of these new development units will be rented to low, as low income, or low to medium income. Low to medium income could mean that you make upwards of $70,000, $80,000 a year or more to be considered low income and to meet the criteria for the developers and the owners of these properties that are going up. The other comment that I wanted to say was about Section 8. Not only the fact that there's nobody here, I'm sure that have a lot of stories to tell about Section 8. I'm not, I'm not opposed to it and I'm not totally for it. I just think Section 8 subsidizes some people to move back into the city while it steers others out of the city. So Section 8 needs to be reexamined from that particular point, especially when you want to give Section 8 to residents in the city, but you'll give it in the suburbs. That's a form of discrimination, I think. I think Detroit totally missed the mark in 2014 when we had a clean slate to start everything over and be a premier city in showing how you can come back from the dust, redevelop, and be a premier city. I think we totally missed the mark on that one because everybody can be looking at all the new and innovative ways that we could have handled our city from that particular point. I'm very passionate about that. I think a lot of Detroites have been displaced. So that's my spiel. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ervin. And I would echo what you said about not enough people were here to speak out today. So I'm hoping that we'll have another opportunity, there'll be some virtual hearings, so they can participate there and tell their story. But also hoping that when we do our summit, we will have participation from many Detroits who have many of these stories that we hear about in the news and in other avenues, but are not here present today. So thank you again for coming up and sharing with us your story and your testimony. Jerome Reed? I think he's still, yeah, I see him now. Call you forward and if you would spell your name. Good afternoon.
I'm Jerome Reed, and I am a staff member of the Michigan Department of Civil Rights. And I wanted to share an experience I had before I joined the staff of the department. I lived in DeWitt Township, which is right outside of Lansing. And I owned a home. It was a ranch house, and we kept it well-maintained. When we decided we wanted to sell, we ran into two problems. And the first one was that it was appraised for less than market value. And we spoke to some people who were involved in the real estate industry. Some of them were African-Americans, some of them weren't. And they told us we needed to take down all our family pictures, all our artwork that indicated that we might be black people and that we would get a better appraisal. So we took the house off the market, made the changes that were recommended, and made the house look like it was just a neutral house. Anybody could have lived there. There was no indication as to our race or ethnic background. And lo and behold, the house appraised higher when we put it back on the market. Okay, this is DeWitt Township, 2020, right outside of Lansing. This is a real problem that people experience, and I think it's something that more people need to look at and it needs to be looked into. The second challenge we had was when we wanted to buy a home, right after that was many of the condominiums in the area had homeowner associations that were listing the properties, and they indicated that they wouldn't accept HUD financing. HUD is insured by the federal government, but it allows people to put down maybe 5% of the purchase price of a home as opposed to 20%, which is conventional mortgage. So this has a way of locking people out who don't have that much cash to put down initially, even though their mortgage would be insured by the federal government and they met all those criteria. So those are just two experiences that I had that I wanted to share and document for the commission because I'm not alone, and there are a lot of people who have had this experience that I've met personally and I've interacted with personally that should be addressed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I think it's appropriate that you came forward to give your testimony. I know that there are oftentimes situations where people feel as though there are certain people that this does not happen to, and your testimony provides a context that it can happen to anyone despite where they're living or despite what their profession might be or those kind of things. So I appreciate you coming forward and telling us your story today.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will be joined by our last expert speaker, which is Ken Coleman. Mr. Coleman, if you would come forward and give your name and spell your name for our reporter.
Thank you so much. Good evening. Don't have to stand so close. Good evening to the commission, Executive Director Johnson, Attorney Satchel. Being here in Martin Luther King High School, Attorney Satchel, I'm sure you appreciate it feels like old days. It's almost like an episode of This Is Your Life. Good to see you all. Good to see you all. I'm Ken Coleman, K-E-N, Coleman, C-O-L-E-M-A-N. I have prepared remarks that I'm going to email. I'll summarize them just to make best use of the time. Certainly, I have had a distinguished professional career as a journalist, but mainly why I believe that I'm here is I have a passion for chronicling African-American life in Detroit, and some of my comments will speak to that passion that I have, if you don't mind me reading. Certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here and share my remarks. It's quite clear that Detroit has had a notorious history when it comes to race discrimination in housing, which is obviously our topic for this evening. As you know, the city proper is 139 square miles. And when you think about that, the size of the city geographically, it is so large that you could fit the entire city of San Francisco, the entire city of Boston, and all of Manhattan Island in Detroit and still have plenty of room left over. We are a city largely of single detached homes, which is very different than maybe some of the cities on the eastern seaboard where you have row houses, brownstones and the like. And so I wanted to provide some context to the size of the city. Securing housing has always been an issue for decades in Detroit. Certainly in the 1930s and 40s it was, for both blacks and whites and other people of color. Detroit was growing at a rapid pace in the 1940s. Detroit was America's fourth-largest city in 1940. Only New York, Chicago, and Philadelphia were larger in population. Our population topped out at 1.8 million people, residents in 1950. We only have about a third of that now in terms of our population. Moreover, Detroit's black population doubled between 1940 and 1950. About 150,000 people in 1940, just over 300,000 people in 1950. That created a pressure on the city to provide housing for all of its residents and inhabitants. Today Detroit is 77% black, about 8% Latino. And as was mentioned a little earlier by someone that provided testimony, we have a growing Bangladeshi community, actually one of the top three cities in America for population size for that group. In 1925, we all know the story of Dr. Ossian Sweet, the African-American physician who moved into an all-white neighborhood on the Lower East Side in Detroit in 1925. He and his friends were trampled on, quite frankly. Hostile whites converged onto the home. Why? Simply because Dr. Sweet was black. Let's fast forward 20 years later. The Orso McGee family, an African-American family who bought a home on the Old West Side, on Seabalt Street on the Old West Side. A majority block club, a majority white block club approached the McGee's and ultimately sued the McGee's saying, you can't live in the house that you bought. Imagine that. The white block club sued the McGee's in the case, Director Johnson, you know, goes all the way to the U.S. Supreme Court. And then a set of opinions, the McGee's were able to stay at their home, but we all know, and many of us who have bought a home in Detroit, many of the deeds have restrictive covenant language still today that say blacks cannot, or Negroes cannot, live in said home. We also know that in 1954, a federal court judge ruled that the city of Detroit's Housing Commission was practicing race discrimination. So it's just not in the private sector, it's in the public sector as well. That occurred after the NAACP, Executive Director Johnson, as you know, filed a suit against the city of Detroit in 1954. Now fortunately and ultimately, the Sweet family and the McGee family were allowed to stay in their homes, the homes that they purchased. But their stories were not uncommon. In fact, racism in housing are part of Detroit's history. That said, those experiences helped to influence state and federal policy, like the 1963 Michigan Constitution that created your two entities, the commission and the department. Obviously, there've been references to the 1965 Civil Rights Act and the 1964 Civil Rights Act and the 1965 Voting Rights Act, and of course, the 1968 Fair Housing Act followed. As a Detroit resident, I think it's important that the commission is holding today's meeting. And it's not lost on me that the topic is very important, but even the selection of the site, the city's Lower East Side, just outside of the old Black Bottom community, we're only a stone's throw away from that community that was raised by local government. City land, I meant, private land condemned by city government had a terrible race discrimination impact in that probably 95% of the residents in Black Bottom were black and poor and had really no other place to go. So this topic has meaning, the setting of it has meaning, and I certainly appreciate you having it here tonight. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Coleman. We find it very interesting, I know. And one of the reasons we asked you to come and speak is because we know you have a distinct historical knowledge of the city of Detroit and many of the things that have happened throughout the course of its existence. Are there any questions from Commissioner Corvo, Attorney Satchel, Director Johnson? All right.
I just want to point out before I sit down, when Dr. Reed talked about, I suspect it might have been a Realtor suggesting that, Dr. Reed, that you take the art down from your walls, we were told that by a Realtor two years ago, in Detroit as a matter of fact, in the old Black Bottom, Elmwood Park area. And so it certainly happens in DeWitt, it happens in Detroit, and it probably happens throughout the country unfortunately. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Yes. Attorney Satchel?
I'm sorry, Mr. Coleman. Good to see you again.
Yeah, I remember you when we both had black hair.
Yeah. Oh, I sprayed this in.
Oh, yeah, got you, got you.
This is my real color. So I have a quick question. With respect to the history that you just provided us, and I think a part of that history is also sort of during the Coleman-Yong administration, we probably saw concerted effort into sort of trying to reverse some of the racial discrimination happening in housing. And I'm interested to understand, if you know, post-Coleman-Yong, have we seen, where's the trajectory, post-Coleman-Yong, and particularly in the present state of the city? Because we do see a lot of burgeoning housing.
Housing starts.
Yeah, starts, yes.
Condo starts.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's a heavy question to be sure. I'll try to answer it in short. You know, what I didn't say in my remarks, you know, at one time Detroit led the nation in African-American homeownership, certainly in the 60s and 70s to be sure, and maybe some of the 1980s as well. But quite frankly, there are lots of communities in Detroit that are going through some of the same gentrification that happened in old Black Bottom that yielded Lafayette Park and Elmwood Park. All one must do is travel along Lafayette here to the West Village area back toward downtown, and you'll see that. The city's population, I pointed out in my remarks, is 77% African-American. That's down from 81% 10 years ago. I'm certainly not suggesting that this is going to become a majority white city at some point. I don't think that's going to happen. But you are seeing a lot of the African-American working and middle-class leaving the city. 250,000 people have left Detroit since the year 2000. That's, that would be big enough, that would be, if you put all those people together, that would represent the second-largest city in Michigan. It's larger than Grand Rapids' population, larger than Sterling Heights and Warren's population. And so a lot of people have left, as one of the previous speakers pointed out, it's costing too much money for working-class African-Americans to live in Detroit. When you factor in auto insurance, quality of life, amenities, it becomes an expensive proposition. My wife and I are raising our 15-year-old here, and we want to stay. But quite frankly, a lot of our friends laugh at us, like, well, we left Detroit 15 or 20 years ago and never looked back. So neighborhoods are changing, a lot, become a lot younger. The co-op unit that we sold last, this, last month, last year, last November, that association is becoming wider and wider and younger and younger every month.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've asked the staff if there are any additional public comments from inside the auditorium, and I've asked already if there were any from the lobby. So hearing none, I know we're a little ahead of schedule, but I certainly want to thank those that came out this evening. Thank you tremendously for those who provided testimony and gave us some historical insight into how Detroit developed and how it continues to develop moving forward. As I mentioned before, there are a number of public hearings that will be coming up. So I encourage you to encourage others that you know of who did not participate this evening, if they have stories they'd like to share, we'd love to hear those stories. We find them very important, and we know that this is what we're going to use as we develop the summit that will happen in July of next June, I'm sorry, of 2024. I want to give you the dates again, which is why I started flipping through my papers. So give me one second. This is the first, and the second one is a virtual hearing that is scheduled for February 7th. There's another in-person hearing that will happen again in the Saginaw Flint Bay City area on March 16th, and a hearing that will happen in Grand Rapids on April 28th. So again, we know that many of you have friends, family, or have worked, that you have people who you know in those areas. We would ask you to encourage them to participate. Certainly, we'd ask people to encourage, people to be encouraged to participate virtually if they could not make it out tonight. We want to have a robust summit in June, allowing for a lot of the testimony that we've heard to be developed into strategies and policies that we can move forward with. Certainly, we want to be able to give recommendations as to how we can improve situations that are of interest to us in terms of housing discrimination, why it's happening, why it continues to happen, and what we can do to stop it. So with that, I want to thank you for coming again out this evening. I should say, I'll give you the exact date, June 12th at the Icon Building on the Detroit Riverfront is when we're going to hold the 2024 Civil Rights Summit on Housing. So I know I'm giving you a lot of dates early. There'll be more information on our Facebook page at the Michigan Department of Civil Rights website. So those dates, if you didn't get a chance to jot them down, please don't worry. We will have more information, it will come out more, more, we will make sure that it's publicized widely so people can participate. It is now, let's see, just want to make sure I didn't have any other closing comments. It is now 5:52 PM, and this hearing is adjourned.